May you have a heavy heart on everybody who is here to work for the City of San Juan? And bless everybody, thank you.
Please apply for a pleasure leadership. A pleasure leadership is a public, United States American, and to everybody for which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with everything he has for all. May be seen, thank you.
Right now, under public.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to change the order of the day, only because we have our attorney here from the civil service to talk to us about the collective bargaining, so we can go into executive session before we start with the regular meeting. Yes?
Now, are we also going to address the other issue?
Yes.
Now that we're back there?
Right.
Okay, no problem.
So, under executive session, the San Juan City Commission will convene executive session in accordance with the Texas statutes and code and updated government code, chapter 551.071, consultation with attorney and Texas government code. The first item is pursuant to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, deliberation regarding real property discussion deliberating deliberation regarding city subdivision. Number two, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071, Texas government code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the collective bargaining and labor agreement between the city and the duly recognized bargaining agenda for the city's laws and important personnel to the San Juan Police Officers Association.
With that being said, is there a motion to enter executive session? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be going to executive session at 6:06 PM. We're back from executive session at 6:58 PM. Is there a motion to reconvene? Is there a second?
Second.
So, we're back in executive session. Under executive session, under one, at this time, we're going to take no action. Under executive session, number two, we're taking no action as well. So, Mr. Arhona, just go ahead and start.
Yes, going back to, on the presentations, we have presentation of departmental reports. Tonight, we have the finance department, police department, municipal court, fire department, and department utilities. I think everybody is here ready, available. Sure you have any questions for them?
Questions for the directors at this time?
Rambo, how was the cleanup for these past Saturday?
Collected over 2,300 tires.
Aye.
It was 11 30-yard containers loaded.
At this time, Rambo, I just want to thank you. I enjoyed working with you guys, being out there with you guys. We had a lot of tires pick up, a lot of brush. Everybody was working, everybody had something duty to do, and pretty much thank JJ and also for being out there with you, and all the rest of the employees that participated on Saturday. Good job.
Mayor, go ahead, sir.
I'll echo the same thing Mr. Coach was talking about. I had the time also and the honor to be out with you guys out there, and the way the individuals were working today were actually diligently, without them knowing that we were there, they were doing what they were supposed to, and I was impressed, I'll be honest with you. Thank you very much, sir, for your leadership.
Arhona? I just have one question for Chief Diesel. Did you ever contact Precinct Two in reference to those, I know we talked about it during the budget workshop, those 10 gears? Okay, and who'd you leave a message for? Mr. Garcia? Okay, all right. Any other questions for the directors? If not, we're going to go ahead and move on. Go ahead, Mr. Arhona.
The next item under presentation by Willdan Financial Services and the proposed cost of service warrants who will rate in debt capacity study.
Mr. Salinas?
Back on May 28th, the Commissioner engaged Willdan Financial Services out of Dallas to conduct a rate debt capacity and cost of service study along with a possible development fee. Today, Mr. Dan Jackson from Willdan is here to do a presentation on the first draft of the report, in case you guys had any questions. So, don't want to get too far into it, I'll just have Mr. Jackson go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Commission. My name is Dan Jackson, Vice President of Willdan Financial Services. We're the firm that has had the privilege of assisting the City of San Juan in performing this water and wastewater rate study and long-term financial plan. We've been the city's consultants for a number of years, back when we were known as Economist.com. We did the last rate study for the City of San Juan back in the 2006-2007 timeframe. I have about 35 years' experience doing water and wastewater rate consulting for cities all throughout the Rio Grande Valley, all throughout the state of Texas, and the United States in general. It's not an easy subject to talk about. The cost of water and sewer service all across the United States is going up. The challenges that utilities and cities such as yours face is, how do we continue to provide a superior level of service to our ratepayers while at the same time, to the best extent possible, keeping rates as low as we possibly can? It's very difficult, and it's an issue that many cities are struggling with today. We have spent the last several months working with the city in developing this long-term financial plan. I'd like to thank David and the members of the city staff for all the assistance that they provided us. They did a lot of work, they always answered all of our requests very promptly, and we really appreciate the effort that they provided to us. I've got what I hope to be a relatively short presentation tonight, where I'm going to go through a couple of different subjects. Next slide. I'm going to start just by talking a little bit about rates in general, because I think it's very important for decision-makers like yourselves to understand what's going on in the marketplace in general. I'm then going to talk about your accounts and your billing units, and then your revenue requirement. In other words, how much water are you producing, and how much does it cost you to produce that water, and how are your costs planning on changing in the next five to 10 years? Then, we're going to go through our proposed rate plan, and then we'll summarize it by just talking about the next steps in the process. We're not asking for any decisions to be made tonight, this is just an introductory presentation. Rate-making is as much a social and community decision as it is a financial decision. The rates that you set, in many circumstances, are based on the policy decisions you make as a community. How much are you going to invest in your system? What type of service are you going to provide? How are you going to invest in the future? All of those decisions go into the ultimate rate plan that you adopt. And so, what we're hoping to provide you with tonight is the information that you need to make those proper policy decisions. And most importantly, what is a fair, just, and reasonable rate to charge for water service? You may be surprised to know that there are many different answers to that question, and there is not necessarily one right or one wrong answer. The question, the answer is, the most fair, just, and reasonable rate design is the one that you as a community decide is the most fair, just, and reasonable rate design. Okay, so what's going on around the country? Well, I've been very busy the last several years, because cities all over the country are raising their water and sewer rates. The average utility in the United States has been raising its water rates 5% to 6% every year over the last decade, and that trend is expected to continue. As a matter of fact, the American Water Works Association expects that water and wastewater rates across the United States are going to triple in the next 15 years. Now, why is that? Why is that happening? I mean, doesn't water just fall from the sky? Shouldn't it be free for everybody? Well, we like to think it will be, but remember, water is a business. You produce water as a product. It's a product just like anything else. And so, as a product, when the costs of producing that product go up, you have no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate ratepayer. You employ personnel, you have administrative costs, you have to build a water and sewer system. It costs you millions of dollars to build the lines that transport water throughout your city and transport sewage to the wastewater treatment plants. All that costs a lot of money, and like any asset, after time, it wears out. And so, the dilemma you face is that, what decisions do you make with regards to the capital improvements and the capital repairs that are necessary for your system in order to continue to provide a good quality of service? I have clients that have rock-bottom water rates. They have really, really low water rates, but you know what? They also have systems that are falling apart, because they keep their rates low by not investing in their system. Is that a good financial policy? Well, maybe yes, maybe no. But you see, those are the decisions, and those are the factors that go in to the long-term water and wastewater rate-making. Also, keep in mind that many cost increases are beyond your control. Look, the cost of everything goes up by 3% a year just due to inflation. So, as costs go up, you have to pass those through to your ratepayers. But also, keep this in mind, you're a nonprofit entity. You're not in this to make money, you're in this to cover your costs. So, all you're asking your ratepayers to do is pay what it is costing you to provide that service. And finally, keep in mind that 30% to 40% of utilities in the United States right now charge rates that don't cover their costs. So, just because another utility's rates are lower than yours, it doesn't necessarily mean their costs are lower. It might mean that they've decided they're going to subsidize their water and sewer rates from their general fund. Okay, what do people charge for water and sewer service here in the City of San Juan? Well, if you're a water customer, you pay for water service in two ways. You pay a monthly charge for the first 2,000 gallons of water, and then you pay a volumetric rate for every 1,000 gallons of water you use after that. Here in the city, residential ratepayers pay a monthly charge of $12.05 for the first 2,000 gallons. Then, they pay a rate for 1,000 gallons that increases the more water they use. This is intended to encourage conservation, while at the same time, the lowest rates are for the lowest-volume users, who typically, although not always, are your lower-income and your fixed-income people. If you're a commercial customer, you pay a rate based on the size of the meter. The larger meter you have, the more demand you exert on a system, so the higher your monthly charge. Commercial customers pay a flat rate of $1.90 per 1,000 gallons. The reason for that is that commercial customers generally don't have the same ability to conserve water like residential customers do. Most water the commercial businesses use is for their business, so they pay a flat rate. On the wastewater side, same thing, minimum charge of $11, and a volumetric charge that increases with the amount of 1,000 gallons that you use. Now, this is a lot of numbers here. What people want to know is, how much do I pay each month for service? Well, your average ratepayer here in the City of San Juan uses somewhere between 8,000 to 10,000 gallons of water service a month. It varies a little bit, obviously, more in hot months, a little less in cooler months, but 10,000 gallons is a very good benchmark to use to compare what people pay for monthly water and sewer service. A ratepayer here in the City of San Juan pays $51.45 for 10,000 gallons of water and sewer service. Now, this doesn't include garbage, or stormwater, or taxes, or anything like that, it's just your basic charge for water and sewer service. That rate is half the state average. The state average here in the state of Texas is $102.49 for 10,000 gallons of water and sewer. So, your rates are extraordinarily low, extraordinarily low, when you compare them to what people across the state of Texas pay for water and sewer service. As a matter of fact, your rates are also very low when you compare them to other communities here in the Rio Grande Valley. $51.49 is just about the lowest rate in the valley. You're a little higher than Edinburgh, but you're at or below virtually every other city in our survey here, and as I said, you're half the state average.
So, is that the, is that the, about the same amount of accounts we have? Like, because I know we have about, what, 6,000 something?
About 6,000 accounts, that's right.
So, when you're comparing the one or two, is that about the same rate, the state average rate?
That's for everybody in the state, so it doesn't matter how many accounts.
With accounts or municipalities?
For municipalities, whether they have 1,000 accounts or 100,000 accounts. It's, you take every city, and you average them all out. And here, and what's really interesting is that, the general rule of rate-making is that the more accounts you have, the lower your rate is, because of something called economies of scale. If you're in San Antonio, and you have several hundred thousand customers cram new to a pretty limited area, you can provide service very efficiently to all of those customers. Here in San Juan, you're a little bit more spread out, and so if you have less customers, your rate would generally be a little bit higher. You're still half the state average. As a matter of fact, like I said, you're below most of your neighbors as well. So, you have a very, very favorable rate when you compare them to other cities here in the Rio Grande Valley. Speaking of number of accounts, you have about 6,600 water accounts. Vast majority of them are residential, as you might imagine. You have about 9,800 wastewater accounts, just simply because you have a lot of accounts in the North Alamo Water Supply Corporation District. Next chart. Now, when you're doing a long-term financial plan, it's important to look at where you are today, but it's also important to look at where you're going in the future. So, that way, you can set rates over the next several years that will ensure that you recover all of your costs. The City of San Juan has had a fair amount of growth in the last few years. In 2016, you had 6,195 water accounts. Today, you have 6,675 accounts. We're projecting you're going to hit as many as 7,900 accounts by the year 2028. About a 2% annual growth rate. That's solid, that's about the state average. Now, this is the kind of chart that people like me like, because it talks a little bit about how people use water here in the city. You sold about 876 million gallons of water service in this past year. 73% of that is residential, to no great surprise, you're predominantly a residential community. But you have a very robust commercial base. About a quarter of your water sales go to commercial accounts. Well, only about 7% of your accounts are commercial, but they use 25% of your water. That's a good thing. Water is a bulk commodity. The more you sell, the cheaper you have to sell it to everybody else, because most of the costs of a water system are fixed. And then, but here's the other dilemma you have. You also want your people to conserve their water usage. You want people to use water wisely. Water is a precious and diminishing natural resource. So, think about it, you're in the business of producing and selling a product that you're trying to get your customers not to buy. So, that presents a whole set of problems and challenges with regards to setting long-term water rates. Okay, next chart. Your water usage has increased in the last few years to about 876 million. We expect it to continue to slowly climb. Now, in reality, what's going to happen is, it's going to go up some years, and down others, and up and down, just depending on weather. Weather is important. If it rains a lot, people don't use as much water. If it doesn't rain, people use more water. Okay? Wastewater accounts, same thing, you know, fairly robust growth over the next 10 years. Okay, yeah, sorry, I should have done this before, but I didn't. Okay, we've talked a little bit about how much water you're selling and who your accounts are. Now, let's talk a little bit about what your costs are. Okay? This is a forecast. A forecast is not a guarantee, it is a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. But one of the things that makes water, utility forecasting easy is that water is a very basic business, it's a very standard business. People use water pretty much inconsistently over a period of time, that makes it a little easier to forecast. So, what are some of the assumptions behind our forecast? Well, most of your personnel costs and most of your operating costs are going to go up 3% to 5% a year. Cost of everything goes up 3% a year, so it's reasonable to assume that your costs are going to trend up over a period of years. As your system grows, you're going to see the need to add some limited new personnel. That's not what's really driving your rate plan, though. What is driving your rate plan is one factor, and one factor alone, and that is how much your capital improvement plan is, and how much debt you have to issue in order to fund that capital improvement plan. The decisions you as a community make on investing in your capital infrastructure is what is going to drive your rate plan, now and in the future. We're projecting, based on a series of discussions with city staff, that you're going to have to, that you're going to be issuing approximately $11 million in bonds this year, with another $47 million of bonds in the next five years. That's $58 million of capital improvements that is needed for the community. Now, think about this, this is $58 million of direct investment in the future of the City of San Juan, because the assets that you construct with this $58 million have a lifespan of 50 years. So, they're not only going to be used by you, they're going to be used by your children, and your grandchildren, and maybe even your great-grandchildren. And so, one of the benefits of running a water system is that, when the inevitable time comes, when you ask your ratepayers to contribute towards the capital investment in your system, they're contributing directly in their own community. So, next chart. Your budget is about $5.6 million this year. As you can see, your personnel and operating expenses are about 57%, your debt service is about 21%, and your other expenses make up the remainder. Very standard budget. I looked at it, and I said, this is exactly what you would expect for a utility this size. But, we really need to concentrate on this capital improvement plan, because that's what's driving your rate plan. As you could see, $19 million of water improvements, and $39 million of wastewater improvements, and that includes $8 million for TCEQ-required wastewater treatment plan improvements. When the TCEQ comes in and mandates that you have to do improvements, and believe me, you're not the only city that they've done this for, there's many, many cities they've done this for, but that adds to your costs. See, the TCEQ doesn't pay for any of this, they just tell you, you have to pay for it. And the only way you can pay for it is by passing those costs on to your ultimate customers. Next chart. So, a capital plan impacts your rates in three ways. One, how much do you have to spend? Two, when do you have to spend it? And three, how do you finance it? This chart here shows that the $58 million that you have to invest is going to have to happen over the next five years, with a lot of investment in the next two years, and a little, and a little less investment in the three years after that. But these improvements are hitting, and they're hitting now, and the need to finance this is what's going to drive the rate plan that I'm about to show you. This is your forecast cost of service. A picture is worth 1,000 words. As you can see, your cost of service is just south of $6 million in the current year. It is expected to rise to over $9 million in the year 2028. This bar chart is composed of several components. The red portion is your operating expenses, the yellow and green portion are your capital outlays and transfers, and the blue portion is your debt service. Look at your debt service. See, it's this portion of your costs in 2019, but it's that portion of your costs in 2028. As you issue more debt, you have to set rates to be able to recover the principal and interest payments that you're going to be obligated to make to fund your capital improvements. This chart right here just is that prior chart with numbers instead of pictures. You start out with a $5.6 million cost of service, it's going to hit $9.6 million by 2028. Okay, now let's get to the meat of the presentation, that's the rate proposal. Before I show you the rates, I want to make a couple of, I want to point out a couple of very important notes. You have, you and the City of San Juan, in my opinion, as a professional who's done this for several hundred utilities over the last 35 years, I can tell you that you have had very, very efficient operating techniques. I know this from my, from my work for you back in the 2006-2007 timeframe, and in my work for you today. You've done an extraordinary job at keeping your rates low. You have not had a rate increase since 2009. While other utilities were raising their rates 5% to 6% a year, you have the same rates today that you, that you had back in 2009. There are not a lot of cities in the United States that can make that statement. However, one of the things that we have to recognize is that costs go up, that is a fact of life. And while you have done as much as you can to keep your system running as efficiently as possible, there comes a point in time when you just simply have costs that need to be passed through to your ratepayers, and that's the position you're in right now. Furthermore, you have the need to issue this debt to fund system improvements. Without rate adjustments, you will not be able to issue this debt. You will not be able to repair, replace, expand, and fix your water and sewer system. And if you don't do that, your system is going to continue to deteriorate. The example I like to use is this, you could save $100 by not changing the oil in your car. Yes, you could do that, but a year from now, your car engine is going to blow out. And so, yes, you could save money by not doing repairs to your system right now, but your system is going to deteriorate, and you are going to increase the risk of a catastrophic failure, and it is going to cause more environmental damage, too. So, while it's never easy to ask ratepayers to pay more, what you're asking them to do is make a direct investment in the future of your city. But, so, to minimize the impact on the ratepayers, we're going to recommend that you phase in a new rate plan over a five-year period. See, what a lot of cities do is, they hold rates down year after year after year after year, and then they do these massive rate increases to pay for new debt. Ratepayers don't like that, they don't like big sudden increases. So, what we're going to recommend you do is you phase in these rates over the next five years. That minimizes the impact on your ratepayers, and it allows them to, they're to gradually adjust their household budgets over the next five years to take into consideration the increased cost of water and sewer service. So, let's go to the important pages. I'm first going to show you the rates, and then I'm going to show you the more important page, which is the impact on an average monthly customer bill. As you can see, we are recommending for your residential water customers implementing a series of five annual adjustments in October of each of the next five years. Your minimum charge of $12.05, we recommend taking it to $15.06 in October of 2019, $17.32 in 2020, with similar, with lesser adjustments in the next three years. The adjustments in the next two years have to be a little higher, too, because of the large amount of debt that you need to issue in the next couple of years. The volumetric rate, we can see gradual annual adjustments as well. Same thing is true on the commercial side. Commercial customers would see the same magnitude of increases as the residential customers would see. Next chart. On the wastewater side, we're recommending taking your minimum charge, once again, a series of five annual adjustments in October of each of the next five years. Your rate of, your minimum charge of $11 goes up to $12.65 in 2019, $14.29 in 2020, and so on, up through the year 2023. Same thing for the commercial side, who already pays a higher minimum charge. Lot of numbers. What does this mean in terms of what people pay? This is probably the single most important chart in the entire presentation, because it gives you an understanding of what the impact would be on an average customer bill. Here in the City of San Juan, the average customer uses about 8,000 to 9,000 gallons of water a month. What that means is that about 70% of your monthly bills are going to be 10,000 gallons or less. Yes, you have some customers that use more than 10,000 gallons. You have some customers use a lot more than 10,000 gallons, but the lion's share of your customers use 8,000 to 9,000 gallons or less. So, let's say somebody uses 5,000 gallons in a month. Right now, they pay $35.60 for that service. Their monthly bill would go up by $7, beginning in October. It would go to $42.54. It would go up by about $5.97 in 2020, and then it would go up by lesser amounts, $2 to $3 a month, in 2021, 2022, and 2023. If you're a 10,000 gallon user, right now, your monthly bill is $51.45. Your bill would go up by about $10 a month, effective in October of 2019. It would go up by about $8 a month in 2020, and then lesser amounts, $3 to $5 a month in each year after that. So, a person who pays $51.45 a month, by the year 2023, five years from now, that person would pay $82.11. Today, the state average is $102. And so, five years from now, people would be paying a rate that is still 20% less than the state average. And guess what? That state average is going to go up in the next five years. I predict that in five years from now, the state average will be between $120 and $125 a month. So, your rates will still be significantly below the state average. The bad news is, is that in order to invest in the future of the City of San Juan, you need to ask your ratepayers to contribute a little more over the next five years. The good news is, is that they will still be paying a rate that is far below the state average. Commercial customers, of course, would see a higher increase, because they by and large are higher water users. So, as you can see, a commercial customer who uses 30,000 gallons a month, right now pays $166, their bill would go up by about $35 a month. It would go up by about $28 a month in 2020, of course, they're using a lot more water, and it would go up by lesser amounts in the year after that. So, you'll be happy to know I'm to my last slide in this presentation. I know it is never an easy thing to do, to ask ratepayers to pay more for water and sewer service. Heck, nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. Heck, nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. And so, a legitimate question is often asked whenever a city or a utility asks its ratepayers to contribute more. What do I get in return? You're asking me, the ratepayer, to contribute more to this system. What, what's in it for me? What do I get in return? Well, believe it or not, there are a lot of benefits to implementing this rate plan. The first benefit is that it will enable you to provide a utility that operates on a standalone basis and is independent of any general fund assistance. Without these rate adjustments, you will need your general fund to subsidize your water fund in future years. You don't want to do that. It's never good for business when somebody is selling a product at less than its cost. And without these rate adjustments, that's the position that you'll be in. You'll be able to, you'll result in a financially healthy utility. The utility you turn over to a future generation will be as financially healthy as the one you inherited. That's what this rate plan will give you. It will further ensure that ratepayers are only paying what it is costing you to provide that service. You are not making money, you're not making a profit, you're just trying to recover your costs. And when costs go up, you have no choice as leaders of the community but to pass those costs through to the people that are causing the costs. And finally, and probably most importantly, is it will give you the ability to invest $58 million into the future of the city of San Juan. It will improve the quality of service, it will provide a well-functioning system for you today and for your heirs tomorrow. And so while it is never easy to ask people to pay more, we strongly recommend that you seriously consider the rate plan that we present to you tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Mary, by me?
Go ahead, sir.
I know you mentioned the 5% to 6% increase across the state, correct?
Yes, sir.
What was the, the percentage valleywide as far as the increase? Was it 5% to 6% or was it less?
What was the percentage what?
The, the amount of increase.
The amount of dollar increase?
Right.
Well, 5% to, a 5% to 6% increase on a $102 base would be about a $5 to $6 a month increase. I'm sorry, about a $3, a $3 to $4 a month increase.
What was the average percentage of increase for municipalities in the valley?
In the valley? It's all over the map. Some utilities are charging more, other utilities are charging less. Some have done massive increases. I know I've done it for a lot of utilities, I've worked for several utilities here in the valley. Some have done very significant increases, some have not increased their rates for many years and then done a big increase. Some cities have done nominal marginal increases every year. Some city, look, no, all cities are different. And so, you can't compare every city with each other. Let's take, for example, McAllen. McAllen has a huge sales tax base, thanks to that mall that they've got there. That has enabled them to underwrite the cost of many of their city services. Let's look at Port Isabel and South Padre Island. They have hundreds of thousands of people come to their island during spring break and the summer each year. So they pass off a lot of their costs to the people who are, by an amazing coincidence, not permanent residents. So, different cities are going to structure their plans differently. But I can tell you this, every one of them is increasing their rates. There's not a utility in this state that is decreasing its rates.
Another percentage, correct?
It's, it's, it's going to be different for every utility.
And the reason I'm asking is because you make the comparison across the valley.
Right.
That's the chart you gave us on page six. You made the comparison, so that's why I'm asking. If they did in fact do the 5% to 6% and they're at that price range right now, then we're doing okay.
I, I would, I would venture that many of, virtually, virtually every city in the valley has raised its rates in the last five years. Some several times, some only a couple of times. Have they all?
To be within our range, then it was not, it was 3, 5% to 6%.
Yeah. It's certainly, I, I think if you average it out, you'd probably come in at somewhere similar to 5% to 6%. I mean, I can, I can tell you based on the cities I've worked for, 5% to 6% is a pretty standard amount. But also keep this in mind, you guys haven't done an increase since 2009. So a lot of these cities have been doing, doing 5% to 6% increases over the last several years, you haven't done it at all. So one of the reasons why your adjustments are a little higher in the early years is playing a little bit of catch-up to ensure that you cover all of your costs.
Now, of course, this wouldn't, this doesn't show also the, the fees for the stormwater fee, the, all of that would be in addition to the rates that have been shown up there. Thank you.
Now, for the record, Mr. Arhona, this is just the presentation. Okay, this is not an action item.
It is not an actual item, it's just a presentation.
Good information that you gave us today.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next item under item C, National Night Out Event, Mary, we can skip this item until the end, we have an item on discussion.
Under items, oh, C?
Yes.
The 2019?
So we can go into public hearing.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be speaking about that in, under A, right?
Right.
Correct, that's right, go ahead.
So, on the public hearing ordinances, it says, "Hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance in the first reading for a resoning request from the Expressway Corridor District to Single Family Resident District of 15.932 acre tract of land, Lot 3, Block 35, Vala Molena and Sugar Company subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile west of Cesar Chavez Road, along the south side of Sergeant Leonel Trevino Road," is requested by Estefania Rios. I decide, Mary, if I may, can we maybe take action on, on tableling this item or maybe taking no action? As our planning director's not with us, he's over at the hospital with his wife, delivering a baby the first time, so I say, go deliver that baby.
First baby?
First baby.
Wow, congratulations.
And they're not, they're not here? This, Estefania Rios?
Well, Mr. Mario Reyna's here, but not the, not the property owner.
So we can go ahead and?
So we can table it or maybe take no action on it until next week, so we can get proper clarification as to what the reasons behind this is.
Motion to table, ma'am?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Next item, appointments, consider the appointment and or removal of member, members related to the Housing Authority Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The item that we have in front of you is the Housing Authority Board, which consists of five members serving two-year staggered terms. As per the Housing Authority Bylaws, if absent more than three consecutive times, the individual shall be automatically dropped, dropped from membership. As part of your packet, you have the list of the members of the Housing Authority Board on page number 96.
So, on this particular board, I know it falls under the mayor's spot?
That is correct.
And it doesn't have to go for a vote. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'll go ahead and, Nora Renteria, and appoint Alfredo, Fred Rodriguez. And also, what I like to do as well is reappoint Alfredo Trevino and reappoint Melissa Gonzalez under the Housing Authority Board. Okay?
Thank you.
We can move on to the next one.
Yes, the next item is consider the appointment and removal of board of directors to the Economic Development Corporation Board.
The Economic Development Corporation shall have a board of directors in which all powers of the corporation shall be vested, and which consists of seven directors who are appointed by the governing body of the city of San Juan for two-year terms of office. Three directors shall be persons who are not employees of the governing body of the eligible city as per section 4B-C of the Act of 1979. And also, as part of your packet, on page number 98, you have the list of the, of the members, of the directors. If you see the two names that are highlighted, those are the individuals that their expiration date, well, their term already expired.
This is for the, is it here?
Yes.
Hold on. The one up for renewal?
Mr. Arturo Juárez Jr. and Mr. Israel Garza.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint, same two individuals.
Second?
And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Move an appointment of a member, members to the Alamo County Metropolitan Organization Transportation Policy Committee.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Arhona, Mayor and City Commissioners, Commissioners. I know that last meeting, we had voted, and I want to thank you, Lenny, Mr. Mayor Lieutenant Lenny Sanchez, for having the confidence and appointed me for the MPO. Sadly to say that I'm not be able to be available for, for the MPO. Apparently, there's some meetings going to be at 12, there's some meetings going to be at 5:30. My job discretion is I coach till 7 o'clock. So, it's hard for me to let the city down by not making those meetings. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor Lieutenant Lenny Sanchez, for putting me there. At this time, I would like to dismiss from being into that, into being into the MPO.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So at this time, what I'll go ahead and do, make a motion to remove Mr. Commissioner Coach Neto Juárez and appoint Commissioner Marqui Villegas. Is there a second? Has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next time, discussion of possible election, discussion of possible election on time and day for the 2019 National Night Out Event, chief?
At this time, here, or, we have, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Yes.
Good evening, sir.
We have this proposed National Night Out for, coming up here in August 17, so it's going to be at the precinct 2 Park on East Nolana, 509 East Nolana Road. So, we plan it to have between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, so we still have, working, working with some sponsors. So far, we, we got about $1,800 from the sponsors, so we're still working with additional people that want to get involved and, and hopefully help out in our, someone, National Night Out.
And this is, what, 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 I'm sorry. Come here.
It's August 17th. We have a tentative time on 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM right now.
August 17th?
Yes, we're still working with Parks and Rec, I believe, at one of the events they plan to show a movie.
And you mentioned about the location being where, sir?
509 East Nolana Road, which is at the park. We had it there before, a couple of years, Mayor. We had a good turnout. We wanted to have something north of 495 this year. Last year, we had it at the police department, so, and so we wanted to have it somewhere north, on the north side, so I think.
Can I ask you this, chief? You don't think it's more feasible having it in a centralized location, somewhere within the middle of the city? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Two years ago, I believe, two, two, three years ago, we had it right there in Garza Peña, I believe, just north of Sewer Road, at the corner of.
95?
Yes. Just north of, no, the school just north of Eldora.
Is that Garza Peña? Yeah, yeah, that's next to Raul Seguero.
Not Garza Peña.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, no, it's.
Red Mac?
Red Mac. We had it, we had it in Red Mac. So we had a good turnout there. The problem that we had there was the fact that the traffic and there was too, were not enough traffic, kids were crossing the street, and it was a little bit kind of dangerous for us, and so we didn't want to, you know, put anybody in danger there, so. The park on Nolana allows us for complete control there, people coming into the park, so, but yes, I, I need to get with the, the committee to see if there's another, you know, location that they've studied or not studied, maybe at the park and here on first, so I need to check with them, I don't know if that's been discussed or not. But, we had good success on Nolana Park, we had really good success out there, people showed up. I think the last time, we gave about 800, about 800 backpacks, something like, 600 backpacks on Nolana Park.
Mary, by me? Go ahead, sir.
Chief, I think it'll be, I don't know, but I, I think that for residents that live all the way over here, I think it'll be too far to go all the way to Nolana. I was talking to Mr. Arhona about that, you know, it's too far. Maybe we can make, find a way how we can do it, like, on 495, I know it's a big street, but maybe make it in the middle, the back area.
Okay.
They, make it more centralized, not too far. I know that the central in city San Juan is not Expressway anymore, it's probably like 495. Because the growth is going, growing north, not to the south.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's my point of view, you know.
Yes, we've been, we've been in, you know, getting the.
And I know 495 is a big street, so.
What was that, Commissioner?
I know 495 is a big traffic street also, but, you know, I was thinking of making more closure around Raul Seguero.
We can study that. We, we can propose it to our committee and see, you know, we can look into that, yes. We have a good location there, give us a good district, maybe the school district can also allow us a location.
Whatever school you decide to, I guess, go with, I don't think it'd be an issue with the school district, because I know they're real good when having events with the city, you know, we work very close and.
That's correct, yeah, we have a really good relationship with them.
Exactly.
So, we can, we can talk to them.
Excuse me? August 26, somewhere around there?
26, 27, what are those dates? On the date, Mayor, Commissioner, I think the day was August 17 for the purposes of the last time, I think we did it too close to a school start. So I think it was on August 25th or something like that last year. So we wanted to do something big earlier, so make sure kids are, we get enough, yeah. You know, I know they're preparing the weekend for school stuff, everybody want to, you know.
Well, I know that, I know school starts on 26, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Ramirez and Marqui, I think we have also some camps going on a week before that, if I'm not mistaken.
On the 19th, we start having some camps at.
On the 19th, okay.
In all schools.
So is August 17 a good day for the commission?
Pretty much.
August 17, is that a good day?
Pretty much. Yeah, I, I have no problem with that, chief, but I think what we need to do as a commission is, I mean, we need to decide now, because I know you got to print some literature.
Yes.
And shoot everything out.
Yes, yes.
And put it on our Facebook and all our social media.
Sure.
So, I'm, I'm asking this commission here, I mean. Go ahead, sir.
I know the discussion that I part, took in some of the meetings, because of the fact, and I understand what Commissioner's saying about being way north, the same, the same scenario happened to the folks that live on the north side when they had it on Ridge Road. So that's why the recommendation was, okay, we had it south last year, let's have it on the north side this year. Maybe for next year, maybe we can look at centralizing it. But, I think it's only fair if, for the residents that do live, and we do have, like you said, because going to the north side, we have a lot of, a lot of kids that do, do not make it down here. So, that's just my opinion.
And for the, and for the.
Go ahead, go ahead with me.
But you'll have, you'll have the same problem that we'll have in the situation. I would say fix it now, then actually have the same issue that we have, and I repeat it some, and I have it centralized, that's just basically what I believe in, you know. Fix it from right, right here and on, because we're going to have the same situation, we're going to repeat itself from the south side. So we fix it now, you know, and continue, kind of keep it centralized from here on. Of course, different locations in the central part of a city, but of course, that's in the future, you know, we can't speak about now.
So, yes, sir. So the commission prefers a school or park, I mean, something we can get, I don't know if Parks and Rec, is Parks and Rec available, I mean, or the park is available on.
Commissioner Baharba here mentioned something about Raul Seguero. I think that would be probably, if we're going to go centralized, I'm, that would be the proper location for that. And I don't see the, the school district giving us any issue with that as well, so.
Okay.
As far, as far as parking, parking, I think Raul Seguero has a pretty good parking lot, and not only that.
Yeah, it do.
There's, I know there's like a leadway to the parking lot to Garza Peña also. So we have another extra parking there. And yeah, you're right, Mr. Ramirez, I know that it starts, camp starts on the 19th, so that weekend before, or Saturday, will be pretty much okay for, you know, to be compliant, because it's going to start already.
Okay.
So, so at this time, it's, I know it's under discussion and, and action as well, so you want to go ahead and, who wants to make the motion?
I want to make the motion to make a centralized location.
Okay.
Versus the location.
Raul de Seguir?
Is that, is that, is that in the motion? Yes, that's the motion.
I'll go ahead and second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We'll, we'll make that correction.
Before you leave, maybe you can get with, call Mr., or with Willingham, and get with Mr. Campos.
Mr. Campos?
Yeah, so that way you guys can maybe walk the area and see exactly where you want to set up or.
Yeah, because we do have a lot of, we have some, some rides, some benders are going to come in, so.
I mean, it's, it's a pretty big school, and it got a good, good, nice parking out there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, make, you know, sometime this week, so that way you can already shoot out.
Sure.
All the literature you need and, and put everything out on social media.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
The next, authorize the city manager to enter and renew an interlocal agreement with the city of Westaco for animal shelter professional services. This is just the renewal services for animal shelter.
Renew, everything the same, no increase or anything? With that being said, is there a motion to approve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, discussion of possible election to approve a budget amendment out of parks, development fees in the amount of sixty-two hundred, not forty-six hundred thousand, sixty-two hundred to other structures. Mr. Willingham?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. This budget amendment, we've began the process of updating and also doing some upgrades to some of the parks. And the first one that we've started on is over at the wetlands. We received that portable building from the school district, and we needed to have a ramp made to enter the building, so that ramp had to be ADA, meet all the ADA requirements. So this amendment is to cover the cost for, for that.
So the ramps are ready?
The ramp is done, it's completed. Just need to pay for it.
So you just need to pay for it?
You just need to pay for it.